Evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Huron City Council for Tuesday, September 28th. First thing on the agenda tonight is a public hearing on the petition of Arda Metals Beverage, USA requesting vacation of portions of Sawmill Creek Parkway. So with that, I will call to order, and we'll please stand for a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 Here. All right, next is swearing in. Any person that plans to speak on this petition needs to be sworn in. So whoever is going to speak, do you want council sworn in?
Please. So all members of council, all staff, and any members of the public that are going to offer testimony on the Arda vacation, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Please say, "I do."
I do.
Thank you. And also, members of the public that may offer testimony, please reiterate kindly that you received the oath when speaking. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone here to speak on this issue? Okay, anyone from council? Oh, did you, all right.
Good evening, members of council. So just to get a quick recap, basically, this, a few months back, Arda submitted an application for a vacation. We're looking at roughly 400 feet at the end of Sawmill Parkway. Basically, in order to fulfill the city plans to install a turnaround as well as complete their last phase of development, we need to essentially take point four, just under a half of an acre, take that portion and rededicate it to the turnaround. So that's kind of just a quick recap on all of that. So that's all we have. I'll take any questions or comments.
Questions from any council members? Matt, did you have any? All right. All right. Well, nothing else? There'll be a motion would be in order to approve the petition for vacation of a portion of Sawmill Parkway.
Mr. Mayor.
Tap.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the petition to vacate a portion of Sawmill Parkway.
Discussion on that motion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Tap?
Yes.
Artino?
Yes.
Peggy?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Claus?
Yes.
All right, thank you, everyone. Then this meeting is adjourned, and we'll go into the regular council meeting. Roll call, please.
Crawford? Here. Claus?
Here.
Tap?
Here.
Artino?
Here.
Dyke? Hardy? Peggy?
Here.
All right. Minutes, we have no minutes.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry.
I'd like to make a motion that we excuse Mr. Dyke and Mr. Hardy from the meeting, please.
All right, discussion on that motion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Crawford?
Yes.
Claus?
Yes.
Tap?
Yes.
Artino?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, next is approval of minutes. We have no minutes for tonight. All right, thank you. Audience comments? Anyone who wants to speak about anything on the agenda or anything in particular, please come forward. Three minutes, time limit. Please state your name, address for the records.
Thank you. My name's Chris Abbott. I'm the treasurer at Hidden Valley Condominiums, 1144 Belletta Drive. I'm here with Gene Capizzi, the former vice president, also at Hidden Valley. If you recall, on June 22nd, we came to address you regarding the request the city had with ODNR for the establishment of a no-wake zone on Mudbrook Creek, as well as the usability, viability of some no-wake buoys that are sitting down at Parks and Rec Building. I won't go over all the discussion at the meeting. It was well documented in minutes. I think it does show support by city council for our request, and we greatly appreciate that. In summary, I think there was two takeaways. Number one, the city was going to use their contacts with local ODNR to determine what the status was of the request, number one. And number two was to check on the viability, the status of the no-wake buoys at the Parks and Rec Building. So that was June 22nd. We fast forward to August 28th, and we had received, Gene received, an email with a document from city council, actually from ODNR to city council, indicating that there was an approval of a number of location points for the buoys to be placed. It was great news. However, when we checked the actual waypoints, they were for locations on the main channel where there's already currently no-wake buoys. So I went back to the original documentation the city submitted twice to ODNR, October 26th, 2018, and September 16th, 2020, and took a look at that and reconciled that and found that ODNR had actually approved five of six waypoints requested. Noticeably absent was obviously the ones we're most interested in, which is the one on Mudbrook Creek. There was a request by city for one speed zone, two no-wake, three shallow area, and again, five of the six were there, approved in that document that we received. Unfortunately, the six was not. So we've kind of come full circle now back to you, looking for your help and assistance with respect to the items specifically we're interested in, which is the waypoint on Mudbrook Creek, as well as the use of the no-wake buoys that are at the Parks and Rec Building. So thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Someone from the city will be talking with you. Thank you. Anyone else? All right. All right, next is, we have a mayor's proclamation. Whereas, Huron Boat Basin is celebrating its 50th year of operation as a heart of Huron's downtown, welcoming generations of residents and visitors alike. And whereas, the city of Huron undertook a massive development plan through the federal urban renewal program to eliminate blight in the downtown. And whereas, redevelopment plans for downtown include a public refuge harbor and green space to serve as a focal point for the reimagined downtown. And whereas, city planners sought to include a cornerstone project as part of the redevelopment strategy that paid homage to Huron's rich history of, as a leader in the boat building industry, and capitalized on its new atmosphere of recreational boating, fishing, and commerce. And whereas, the Huron Boat Basin was widely regarded as the most attractive feature of the downtown redevelopment plan. And whereas, within assistance, with assistance of both state and federal agencies, construction of the $1.3 million Huron Boat Basin officially kicked off with a dedication ceremony in 1968. And whereas, on October 28th, I'm sorry, October 23rd, in 1971, the Huron Boat Basin officially opened to a crowd of over 2,000 with opening ceremonies, opening of the waters ceremonies, letting over 10 million gallons of water to create a public harbor and green space along the Huron River. And whereas, future improvements to the boat basin included additional amphitheater and a marina building. And whereas, the Huron Boat Basin has become the crown jewel of the city of Huron's downtown, hosting thousands of people each year through a robust event schedule highlighted by the iconic Huron River Fest. Now therefore, I, Mayor Artino, do hereby proclaim October 23rd, 2021, as the 50th anniversary of the Huron Boat Basin, and ask that the community to honor those past and present for the hard work and dedication in building and maintaining such an iconic public amenity, and wish it continued success for generations to come. I'd like to say thank you to the Parks and Recs group for their ongoing work in maintaining this lovely property. And everybody else that helps them from the city as well, all the other staff members. Thank you. Old business? Oh. All right. I'm sorry. Next is our presentation from the developers for the ConAgra property. Mr. Laskell, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, those from the public in the audience. I just wanted to take a couple moments to have some introductory comments before I turn things over to the development team. Couple things I want to mention to start. I do want to acknowledge a couple folks. One, Jamie, who's with Montrose Group, who's the city's economic development consultant, that has been working with the city the last five or six months to help vet qualifications of interested developers, and certainly want to thank all the firms that have submitted and shown an interest in developing and investing in Huron. Also, I think it's important, and I know the folks will mention this in their presentation, what is in front of everyone is truly just a concept. We've got to start somewhere to move the development forward. And there's a lot of things that probably all of us may want to tweak, change, and there's absolutely going to be the opportunity for that. But I think we wanted to take this opportunity to sort of have the first introduction of the concept to the community, and also introduce the development team to the community as well. And just quickly, sort of how we got here, I know there's been a lot of starts and stops on this site through the years. Obviously, there was an anxiousness to start the process again, which we did in April of this year with the issuance of a request for qualifications and preliminary development proposals that was issued in April. Those were due to the city in June, at which point we received five proposals from development firms. And a committee, which included members from council, planning commission, department heads, and the Montrose Group vetted those qualifications and reduced that list of five firms down to three, at which point those firms met with the group to do in-person interviews in which we were vetting financial capacity, development track record, and again, very preliminary conceptual plans for the site. And through that process, there was a pretty unanimous sentiment in the room that the folks at NAI Harmon Group and their development team had a great vision for the site, knowing that again, it'll be subject to public comment and feedback, but also the financial backing, and also, most importantly, the track record for successful development in and around this area. So with that, I'm going to turn things over to the NAI Harmon Group and their development team for some introductions, and then their presentation.
Thank you, Matt. Appreciate the invite here. We are more than excited to be presenting our vision of what we can do here in Huron. And council, what I will say, this is the best council meeting I've ever been a part of.
Me too.
So I'm going to say a few words. I'm Craig Stanbach. I'm the president. I'll introduce the rest of our team here in just a second. Some of the backgrounds that we have are, we're a nationally recognized developer. We have developed over close to a half a billion real estate in 14 states. We are homegrown. We are born in Toledo, Ohio. We are a family-run organization. We are long-term holders of real estate. What you'll find out is if we put our money in our wallets into an investment, we will be there 25, 30 years from now. I had talked with many, many of the people on council here before the presentation, and I can remember one, in my tenure here, one project that we have sold over 10 years. Everything else that we, we put our hearts and our sweat and everything that we have into a project. So what we have here, I'm going to introduce, and we've taken a long time to get the right partners that we, that we deal with on a day-to-day basis, and they have to have the same vision that we have, a family, a family business. They have to have, the handshake is, is our word, no matter what the contract says, no matter what, what anybody wants to, wants to talk about, we will stand behind our. Every time, when we saw this site back in April, and we saw it on the other side, it, you know, it piqued our interest. It was, it was a very exciting project that we wanted to get behind. But every time we've come back, especially on tonight, on a night like this, I can't imagine a better project that we want to be a part of. 75-degree weather, boats, marinas, we are more excited now than we were starting in. Huron has started and what we would want to be a part of. With that, what I'd like to do is introduce our partner, and that is Brian Gruber with Ridgestone Builders.
Thank you very much. I'm Brian Gruber with Ridgestone Builders. We're also a family, owned and operated company in Toledo, Ohio. We have 35 years of experience in residential and commercial construction, with a focus on creating these lifestyle communities throughout Ohio, Indiana, or Ohio, Kentucky, and Michigan. And this is, like Craig was saying, is just an awesome site to be able to create. That, the environment's already there, and now for us to come in with this concept and create a really neat destination place to live and, and create a new, a lifestyle right there. So we're very proud to be a part of the team and look forward to working with you to create a, hopefully, an iconic part of Huron.
Thanks, Brian. Next is Nate Wood, who has the vision. He is the architect with Design Collaborative. He'll do more explanation on the vision of what we, for the city of Huron.
Thanks, Craig. I like that. I have the vision. Yeah, I'm Nathan Woods with Design Collaborative. We're an architecture and engineering firm based in Fort Wayne, Indiana. I think we just made our 76th hire. So nice midsize, and our mission for the past 27 years has been to improve people's worlds through people-first places. And so what I'll try to do here as we walk through this space is to show you a little bit about that and how we have started to do that with the concept, and where we're really excited to enrich this through a process of working alongside the community and city council to make this really, really special for the city of Huron. So really, just trying to keep this nice and high level, I think Matt did a great caveat on this, that this is an initial concept based on how excited we were about the site. But we truly do look to opportunities to incorporate just some of the, some of the history of the site, some of the history of Huron, finding those special stories about how the ConAgra site, and maybe some of the stories that you might have as a child, or some of that history. Those are where we really find a lot of the special things that happen in a project. This isn't just another project to us. It's really a passion that we get to fulfill on every, on every one of these developments. So just walking briefly through the site, some of the pieces that we're really excited about, walking you in from the north, because that's what we can see from here. Man, are we excited about the basin. I think we get a glimpse of how exciting this, this space is, and some of the festivals that you, you have on the site. But getting, getting additional access to the water from this 10-acre site to the east of downtown, adding more access, adding opportunities where you'd be able to float in a stage and, and have something where you have a bands on the basin. And whether you're coming and going during the summer from a, from a fishing trip, or you're renting a kayak and going out there, those are the types of spaces that we're trying to create on the north side of the site. Walking around the site, what you're seeing is a half-acre ribbon park, or a half-mile-long ribbon park that's, that's dotted with other, other overlooks on the west, trying to, trying to complement and bookend some of the activity that, that we're here celebrating the 50-year anniversary of. So that's a bit full circle there. But then also connecting through the middle with a nice neighborhood park that will be both activated by the surrounding residential, but able to be borrowed, used by a festival or other activities like that. On the east side, continuing to, to try to find additional connections to the water, looking at adding additional boat slips, other overlook areas. And then on the south side, as you would be entering from the road, retail opportunities, other opportunities to complement the, the uses at the boat launch. And, and then on the residential side, with a three-story apartment building being viewed from six, or Cleveland there, and then the rest of that water's edge being reinforced with new two- and three-story townhomes. Did I stay in my time limit? Okay.
Thanks, Nate. And our last one, and I'll give a shout out to the man here, has been voted entrepreneur year ago, Ernst &amp; Young, for the state of Ohio and Michigan. And here next month goes to California to compete nationally. So if there is a vote, please vote. Ed, Mr. Ed Harmon.
Thank you, and thanks, everyone, including the mayor and the council. I am very honored and privileged to be here tonight to present this. I was telling someone else, last winter, Craig walked in his office and he says, "What do you know about Huron, Ohio?" I said, "It's nothing." And he presented the data that he got from the bed for the presentation. And I came out and I got excited, because this is different, it's unique, and we want to be part of it. I'm sure the question comes, "Who are these guys, and what do they do, and how can we accept them in our community?" I'll give you my background, if I may, without boring you too much. But 35 years ago, I was downsized from a major corporation and decided to start my own business. And I did that in Columbus, Ohio, which we still have a corporate office in Columbus, including 14 other states, with about 420-some employees nationwide. And they're in different businesses, from restaurants to trucking companies to logistics to construction. So we're a multi bag, but we're still one owner, one family that owns us. And I started the business 35 years ago with $15,000 in my pocket. And I was happy to have $15,000. Today, we're worth over $500 million in value of appraised properties. I don't tell you that number for any reason other than the fact that it doesn't matter who you are, what you're doing, you can do the same thing. So we want to add to Huron. We want to be part of this community. And among the meetings that we had with the committee, I said, "I want to have a condo number one right there." And I will do that. I appreciate this opportunity so much that unfortunately, or fortunately, I'm not sure which one, I will be part of the community, and that's what we're asking for. There's two other people here that I've got to introduce, Emily, Yagi, and Macy, who puts all this together. They have PR department from our company. So, guys, thank you. And again, to a summary, this is our presentation. This is what we feel that this is a start. Our cost in doing this is approximately $25 million that we would own and control that investment. And we are looking for support and would welcome any questions, any comments that we could enhance this. Thank you. Questions, comments? That was easy.
The gentleman in the back.
Timeline, sorry. Timeline. In these processes, it, it's hard to predict until contracts are signed, commitments are made. But we would be looking for spring of next year to have everything finalized to be able to go for final permitting. That'd be our target date. Any other questions? Let me get engineering.
Thank you. It's going to be, have to be a partnership. We'll probably deal with the city in collaboration with some of those as far as the infrastructure. There's still a lot of engineering here. It's just a concept right now.
And I would just add on to that. There's a series of negotiating points. If, if there was consensus to move forward, it would have to occur over the next several months. Everything from site control to that public infrastructure you discussed, whether that's utilities, roadways, roadways, sidewalks, green space, seawall investigation, there's a lot of negotiating points that would still have to be ironed out over the next, like, two, three, four months.
Other questions? We anticipate that the, probably three phases, and the ones will be the, will be the ones towards the water, which will be ones for sale.
We would also, with Brian's help, we would do the construction, including our own construction company that could come in and do some of the work that would be needed, but it'll be our own construction crews.
I think the demand's going to, going to dictate how quickly that goes. More, more like two phases, because with what we anticipate, the, the demand, it's, we feel confident that it's going to go quick. Brian?
I would anticipate that it's a two-year project, and it could be two to three years. But we would like to open it up. In all these projects we do, we open up in phases. So, you know, you would be doing infrastructure and stuff next summer with a goal to be opening units for sale for the following spring, and you'd be moving people in throughout that timeframe. So it wouldn't be like you'd be constructing it all and moving it at the end. You'd be moving them in throughout the, throughout the process. But I think the overall process would be a couple-year process to get through construction.
No, this is absolutely envisioned to be open to the public. Not only on the half-mile boardwalk, which is contemplated to tie into the existing trail system and, and just extend it, but also that inner neighborhood park. The inside would be something that could host a festival or a graduation party and definitely meant to be a public amenity. definitely meant to be a public amenity.
We want to enhance what you have now. We're not going to compete with other restaurants or other type of businesses that would not be in existence today. So by understanding that the community, we want to enhance the community, not to do anything else.
Are you putting any sort of public housing in this area?
No. Right, right. The price points that we're looking at are probably $400 to $600,000. Okay? That's going to eliminate any of the worries about if you're insinuating low income or something like that. No. Plus, the density of this site is going to dictate to have that elevated price for...
Yeah, I was just going to ask, just looking at this and thinking about the connection from this side of the river to that. You guys probably already explored this, because I mean, it doesn't work, but it's kind of a fluke. Is that a possibility from the side to that side?
That would be cool.
I don't know. Yeah.
We would have to beg and pray for a lot of grants.
I always like to throw it up. I always wish for it.
Yes.
The purpose that we're on, also, on this side, and just a question from the city, what's anticipated across all those people buying these units for $400,000, $600,000 are looking at, tiles, bag, and abandoned rail?
That's a good point. What's, that's a question to kind of...
We'll let our city manager.
That's an absolute great question. And certainly, obviously, the, to start, the difficulty is we're dealing with Norfolk Southern in terms of its ownership from a site control standpoint. But we've started, as recently as six or seven months ago, additional negotiations with them about minimally portions of the site in terms of whether they could be beautified or, in a best-case scenario, taken out of Norfolk Southern's ownership. We understand that's a really, really long process. But I think it's something that we've already started exploring and having conversations with. But we know it's a long road. But I think minimally, if we could start with beautification of the site, I think would be a first step before beginning the really long process of potentially trying to pry it loose from Norfolk Southern's ownership, which I think would be a best-case scenario. But minimally, I think we'll negotiate and try to gain beautification of the site first. Because your point is well-taken in that those are going to be staring sort of northeastward or eastward across that site.
Ed, we have the same interest of taking care of that view.
Any other questions on this? And thank you for your support and help. Thank you.
Council, any questions?
Nope.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, appreciate your being here tonight. Next on the agenda is old business. I don't believe we have any old business, so move on to new business. Vice Mayor, chat.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion accepting the recommendation of the selection committee and authorizing the city manager to commence negotiations with NAI Harmon Group as it relates to the redevelopment of the former Conagra property.
Discussion on that motion? Did you want to say anything?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to council and the public. I probably sound like a broken record, but more than anything, I think the most important thing to get across this evening is, one, that we are starting again in earnest, but we understand this is a long process with a lot of public input and potentially some design changes, alterations based on that input. As much as we're coming to the end of a search process, we've obviously got a longer process ahead of us, based on this potential hopeful motion this evening. There'll be a lot of touchpoints between the community and council and planning commission with this project moving forward. But I think we've got a great development partner and development team who, again, throughout the entire process, stressed more than anything their willingness to accept and take input and appreciate the history of a community and try to integrate that. So I'm hopeful that we can get sort of a green light to start the longer, harder process moving forward, but certainly an exciting one. Thank you.
We do plan to keep our citizens informed on our progress as we move along, so... Any other discussion on that motion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Tap?
Yes.
Artino?
Yes.
Peggy?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Next is resolution number 66-2021.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Crawford.
I'd like to move that resolution number 66-2021 be placed on its first reading, please, and the three-reading rule be suspended.
Discussion on that motion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Crawford?
Yes.
Claus?
Yes.
Tap?
Yes.
Artino?
Yes.
Peggy?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution number 66-2021. A resolution authorizing the city manager to accept a proposal and enter into an agreement with Bricker and Eckler, attorneys-at-law, for the provision of legal services related to Huron Public Power for the period of October 1, 2021, through September 30, 2022, at a cost not to exceed $28,800, and further authorizing payment to Bricker and Eckler, attorneys-at-law, for provision of legal services related to Huron Public Power from January 1, 2021, through September 30, 2022, in an amount not to exceed $40,000.
All right. Mr. Lasco?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to defer to Finance Director, Mr. Swayzgood, to walk council and public through the legislation.
Mr. Schrader, that last sentence, that should be September 30, 2021. That's for prior services.
Yeah, Madam Clerk, I stand corrected. The last three lines, the provision of legal services related to Huron Public Power should be from January 1, 2021, through September 30, 2021, in an amount not to exceed $40,000. I stand corrected. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lasco. Good evening, council members. Just to provide a brief background on the city's relationship with Bricker and Eckler, at the end of 2020, the city began negotiations with AMT for the sale of substation assets, which also triggered negotiations with Mucci Farms to modify Huron Public Power's rider on power use. The city entered into an agreement with Bricker and Eckler at that time for legal services related to both of these matters. The expectation was that these matters would not exceed the council approval threshold. However, the negotiations went longer than anticipated, which is expected resulted in a total amount exceeding the council approval threshold of $25,000. So that's the reason for that second item. On the resolution, there is plenty of budget already appropriated, so the payment can be made. It's just with the city's approval threshold, we do need to seek council approval for those pay, the payment of those invoices. In addition, the first item in a part of this agreement is the administration is requesting council approval for a monthly retainer of $2,400 a month for eight hours to keep Bricker and Eckler as Huron Public Power's legal counsel going forward. With the level of expertise needed for public power and plan to expand the utility over the next several years, Bricker and Eckler's legal services on public power will be heavily needed, and this contract provides those services at a discounted rate going forward as long as we're in contract with Bricker and Eckler. Both of these items will be paid through the electric fund, so all revenue received through the electric fund will be the main source for payment of these items. So I would be willing to answer any questions if you have any.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, please call the roll for final adoption.
Crawford?
Yes.
Claus?
Yes.
Tap?
Yes.
Artino?
Yes.
Peggy?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Crawford.
I make a motion that resolution 65-2021 be placed on its first reading, and the three-reading rule be suspended, please.
Discussion on that motion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Claus?
Yes.
Tap?
Yes.
Artino?
Yes.
Peggy?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Mr. Schrader?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution number 65-2021. A resolution, amending resolution 2020-24, adopted March 31, 2020, authorizing the city manager to execute a contract modification from CTL Engineering, Inc., for additional construction inspection and construction administration services related to the US Six Phase One paving project, ERI-6-17.49, in an increased amount not to exceed $33,224.
Mr. Lasco?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Mr. Schrader mentioned, last March in 2020, council did approve a resolution as relates to CTL Engineering for construction inspections on Route Six Phase One. That contract was for just over $218,000. This contract modification is in an amount of $33,224, which would cover construction inspections for three main things primarily. The temporary striping that was previously done, the change order inspections that have occurred throughout the project, and then, thirdly, the final striping inspections and sign changes that will be occurring over the next couple of weeks. So this should get us through the remainder of Route Six Phase One from a construction inspection standpoint. And this is, going back to last meeting, this will be included in the manuscript debt issuance that council considered and approved at last meeting.
All right, thank you. Questions or discussion from council? Hearing none, please call the roll for final adoption.
Claus?
Yes.
Tap?
Yes.
Artino?
Yes.
Peggy?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
All right, next on the agenda is resolution number 67-2021.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Hagee.
Mr. Mayor, I move that resolution 67-2021, the three-reading rule be waived and it be placed on its first reading.
Discussion on that motion? Please call the roll.
Peggy?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Claus?
Yes.
Tap?
Yes.
Artino?
Yes.
Mr. Schrader?
Thank you. Resolution number 67-2021. A resolution, amending resolution 2020-19, adopted March 10, 2020, authorizing the city manager to accept change order number four from Smith Paving and Excavating for labor and materials related to expansion of the US Route Six paving project, number ERI-6-17.49, in an amount not to exceed $200,000.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As mentioned, this is change order number four from Smith Paving for not to exceed $200,000. This is in relation to a few things that will be occurring over the next couple of weeks, one being the final striping of Route Six, which includes the bike lane delineation, the green painting that was approved by council and vetted publicly up until the end of July. There are going to be some alterations to the existing striping from a traffic pattern standpoint as well at several intersections, so those will need to be redone. And then, thirdly, we do, because of that, have to swap out several signs. We do anticipate this change order coming closer to 140 to 150, but just to be safe, we wanted to get that not to exceed, and we're hoping for that approval so we can get everything wrapped up over the next couple of weeks. I'm looking at Russ. I think we're in good shape, so hoping to move forward and get this wrapped up and certainly appreciate council's consideration of this request.
All right, thank you. Any discussion or questions from council?
I just had a quick question, Jim. Do you anticipate this being the end of, you know, we're kind of cleaning up after the project, or what you've got to say?
I'll defer to Russ, but I absolutely believe for Route Six Phase One, this would wrap it up. Okay.
No other questions, comments? Please call the roll for final adoption.
Peggy?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Claus?
Yes.
Tap?
Yes.
Artino?
Yes.
All right, next on the agenda is city manager's discussion. Mr. Lasco?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, those from the public that are here with us as well this evening. Just a few comments I wanted to touch on as a follow-up to last council meeting. We do anticipate the temporary road improvements on Sawmill Parkway to commence this week to try to soften those bumps along the corridor prior to the full reconstruction, which will start next year. Again, I do want to thank Jamie with Montrose Group and NAI Harmon and all their interest and participation and work that they have put to get here this evening, and we look forward to the partnership moving forward. So thank you, everyone. Route Six streetlights, the new streetlights are substantially complete. Crews have mobilized over the last three weeks. We're hoping that is completed in the next week or so. Following that installation and lighting, First Energy will be following right behind to remove the redundant lights that are still present. So those will be swapped out as soon as the new lights are electrified and completed here in the next week or so. As mentioned, Route Six striping, pending ODOT approval, which should come any day, we will be striping Route Six through the final striping plan in the next two weeks is the plan. I believe we're anticipating five days to complete that work roughly along the entirety of the corridor. Related to Mucci Farms, on September 23, Mucci Farms requested permission to begin lighting their facility, starting at 5:00 a.m. on Thursday, September 24, due to inclement weather. While the current lighting plan allows lighting to begin on October 1, the administration did not see any reason that they could not start lighting during the early morning hours one week early, so we did approve that request. Mike Spasic, our electrical consultant, did confirm that the recent Huron Public Power meter upgrades could handle the increased load as part of Phase Three. Just a quick update on Fireland Scientific. On September 22, Fireland Scientific presented conceptual plans to the planning commission to solicit feedback prior to their full site plan submission, which will encompass a pretty significant expansion to the complex. They are exploring the addition of about 50,000 square feet of greenhouse warehousing office space, as well as about 250 parking spaces. They do anticipate presenting final plans to planning commission at the upcoming meeting or two, and I do believe we're hoping to coordinate a tour amongst council representatives and staff for anyone that would like to join in the, I believe, sometime in October. Update on the fish cleaning station. We have now fully executed our agreement with ODNR for $500,000 for that fish cleaning construction project. We're currently working with OHM to develop a final proposal for 100% design and bidding documentation preparation, which we hope to present to council in the next meeting or two. Couple updates from finance. The finance director has been meeting with department directors over the last few months to discuss the 2022 budget. The updated action plan has been a great resource for the administration during these discussions. A first draft of the 2022 budget book is expected to be completed and distributed to council and the finance committee in October. The first finance committee to discuss the budget is scheduled for October 18. The August financial report was emailed to the finance committee and council. Income tax receipts are up 10% from 2020, which is a good sign for the local economy. Certainly let Mr. Swayzgood know if there's other information or questions you guys have on the finance report. Just wanted to acknowledge that the fire department did hold a swearing-in ceremony on September 26 for new firefighters, Keegan Lobzinger and Mike Clavett. We again want to congratulate them and their families for their hires, and we wish them well in their careers moving forward. Just a few updates on contracts. It's been a busy year for contract updates and renewals. I believe we've nearly crossed the finish line on the Huron Township Fire Protection Agreement, which I believe we'll be presenting to council at the next meeting in October. As mentioned previously, we have come to terms with FOP patrol officers and FOP sergeants, which I believe will also be presenting to council potentially at the next meeting. And we are still in good negotiations and near the finish line with fire and ASME, which will be presenting to council here shortly. Just a quick update for a few meetings. Huron Joint Recreation District meets Tuesday, October 5, 6:30 in the council chambers. The Utilities Committee meets Wednesday, October 6, at 5:00 in the main conference room. Board of Building and Zoning Appeals, Monday, October 11, at 6:30 in the council chambers. Board of Building and Zoning Appeals, Monday, October 11, at 6:30 in the council chambers. Planning Commission and Design Review, Wednesday, October 27, at 5:00 in the council chambers. And there is a Records Commission, Thursday, October 27, 9:00 a.m. in the main conference room. And lastly, I do truly want to acknowledge the work of our Parks and Recreation Department, Terry, everyone else for making tonight happen. It looked beautiful, and certainly council with the idea to have the meeting here. I think it turned out beautifully, but our staff was busy down to the last minute making it look great, so we are truly appreciative of them. So that concludes my comments. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for the city manager?
No, sir.
None? All right. Thank you, Mr. Lasco. All right, I have a two-hour presentation under the mayor's discussion. Oh, no, just kidding, just kidding. Council threatened to throw me in the river if I did, so the only thing I'd like to do tonight is say thank you very much for coming out. It's a little chilly, so we'll kind of move on with the agenda and get us all home to warm up as quick as possible here. For the good of the order, Ms. Crawford.
I just want to say congratulations to the two new firefighters. Welcome aboard. This is great. We should have done this 100 times before now. This is tremendous, and thank you all for coming out. Thank you so much to the Harmon Group for the presentation. This is really very exciting and a long time coming for us, so that's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Crawford?
Yes, I want to just thank you again to the community for coming out. This is a great turnout, biggest turnout since pre-COVID, I would say. Also, thank the Harmon Group for their great presentation. It's very exciting, very professional. We really look forward to the work ahead to get this thing moving. I want to congratulate Councilman Dyke and his wife Cory on their new baby born yesterday, Oxford Joseph, and so we can all understand why he's not here tonight. And just, yeah, great thanks to the staff and Parks and Rec for getting this set up here, the meeting here. How amazing that we had this backdrop and Congress sights right behind over our shoulders. Couldn't have been any more special, so that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chat.
Yeah, again, thank you to the Harmon Group. I'm looking forward to working with you guys. Hopefully, we can get this thing going. I'm excited. I think council's excited. The search committee, I think they did a great job. Montrose Group, thank you. City staff, second to none, taking care of everything. Everybody, thank you for that. And as far as council, like Mark said, there's another Huronite born yesterday. Joe's making his own basketball team. This is number five for Joe, so four boys and one girl, so wishing them the very best.
All right, thank you. Mr. Haggie?
Yeah, thank you to the Harmon Group for making the trip out here and making it personal. Really appreciate that. I also want to thank the staff for putting this on. This was actually the idea of Wendy Walderzak Dyer, who is Pete Walderzak's daughter, and he was very involved in making this happen. And for those of you who were there that day 50 years ago, we've got a lot better weather today, that's for sure. So thanks to Wendy, thanks to Allison and the entire Huron Historical Society, and particularly to Doug and Mike Spafford, who basically came up with this idea and helped put it all together. So thanks to all those guys. And I was gonna say, congratulations to Joe also. He's got a new member of his platoon, and it was surprising that nobody mentioned why he was missing before, so congratulations to Joe and Cory.
All right, thank you. Anything else? Nothing else from council? We have no executive session planned, so motion to adjourn would be in order.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make the motion that we adjourn this council meeting.
Please call the roll.
Tap?
Yes.
Martino?
Yes.
Peggy?
Yes.
Crawford? Yes. Claus?
Yes.
All right, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.